Welcome, everybody, to the City of Farmers Branch City Council Study Session for Tuesday, November 18. Our first order of business this afternoon will be public comments. I don't have anybody signed up to speak at the study session here. So in seeing nobody else, moving right along, will be Item C1, which is to review and discuss consent and regular agenda items. Councilman Neal.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do have some questions regarding K7 and K15. I don't know if you'd like to address them here in study session or discuss them later.
Let me see.
Both fire.
Both fire. Chief's here. Let's just knock it out now.
Okay. Hopefully, this will be pretty quick, I think.
Good afternoon, Daniel Latimer, Fire Chief. Yes, sir.
So this is regarding the K7, a purchase of a maintenance for the Stryker medical equipment. Is this in connection with the Stryker stretchers that we purchased not long ago? Or is this a different kind of equipment?
So, yes, sir. It incorporates the Stryker equipment as well. So when we did the Stryker ProCare services, it is not just for the stretchers. It incorporates any of our medical devices. That's a Stryker item, which is going to be our stair chairs. It's also the cot loading system, the stretcher. And then, along with that, it's also the device that we use to do compressions, called the Lucas device. And then, the most part of that is going to be our AED. So the Fire Department, we manage the whole AED program for the whole city. And so there's 29 AEDs scattered out throughout the whole City of Farmers Branch. It's at different park facilities, fleet services. We have them on the police patrol vehicles. That's the majority of that cost.
Okay. So the majority of the cost is to help with the AED program along with the other?
The AED program is a part of it. Yes, sir. There's all little bits of elements of that.
Okay. And with the other Stryker equipment, are we still under any sort of warranty or guarantee? Because I know we didn't buy it. We bought some of that equipment not long ago. Or we still have any?
That's a great question. So we just got out of warranty, a one-year warranty with the last equipment that we just purchased. And so what we started doing a few years ago is when we'd buy new annuals, we'd buy that with the annuals. So that way, we didn't have to. It stuck with our replacement schedule. It also would reduce the maintenance costs because we had a third party that was servicing it as well. So we took that cost away. So when we get our two new annuals that are expected to arrive in June, July, the summer, then we'll get that year warranty. But right now, ours just expired.
Great. That clarifies a lot. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, K7?
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Vierfranca?
Nothing. Thank you.
Councilman Reed?
Nothing for me. Thanks.
Councilwoman Bennett? New councilwoman?
I have a question for K4 for my firefighter again. Sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Daniel Latimer, Fire Chief. Welcome to the dais.
Thank you. Just a question, because I'm new. Is this generally the cost for equipment, for uniforms, for your firefighters? I know it was, I want the best for you guys. But is it like the best price for the best quality? Or?
Yes, ma'am. That is a wonderful question. And so over the last several years, I've been in administration on my seventh year, fourth year as our Fire Chief. And so what we've done, working along with the city management as well over these last four years, is we have a replacement schedule for everything, even including our T-shirts, pants, everything you can think of, any asset item. So uniforms is part of that. And so what we've done is actually, we've lowered our cost over the last couple of years. We bought into some new uniforms about four years ago. And then we've started now filing, being able to come down. So actually, our cost is actually coming down. And it should start to come down more. And then when we do uniforms, this also is part of the whole package. So it's when you think uniforms, it's also the brass that goes on our class A's. It's our nice suit you see that we wear for formal and funerals. But this also is everything. It's our T-shirts and not just what you see there. So but yeah, it is a good cost. We also look at all the other different vendors. The reason we went to the Workright uniforms that we did for operations, which you see are firefighters, is because the life on that was 10 years. What we were noticing is with some of the other gear that we had, the life lasts about two or three years. And so it is not much of a difference. So then we transitioned all of our department operations to that about four years ago. And so now we're finally starting to taper off. But that is a really good price for that point that we're doing.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is Item C2, receive an update on adopting a public facility corporation and/or a housing finance corporation.
Good afternoon. Mayor of City Council Darren Harris, Deputy Director of Economic Development. This afternoon, I had the pleasure of giving you a discussion, at the request of Mayor Protip Bennett-Burton, on the public facility corporation and housing finance corporation. Just to give you a brief background of the structure of each, the public housing, public facility corporation is structured with a board of directors, consisting of three board of directors. And they can have council members, housing authority commissioners, and other public officials as part of the board. They're allowed to make sure that the city goals and the public benefits are met. And then the purpose of the public facility, Public Facility Corporation is to own, finance, and build public buildings and infrastructure. And this is a nonprofit corporation. And going into the structure of the Housing Finance Corporation is similarly structured as the Public Finance Corporation, Public Facility Corporation. Again, it has a board members and it has a chairperson and a managing director and has board committees. It has to have five people on that board. And it can be, the purpose for that one is to acquire, construct, finance public, affordable and attainable, low-income, moderate housing for people in the area. Looking at the potential applications for each, both coincide. They both can have affordable housing or attainable housing. Both can have revitalization and redevelopment under used land. And both can have issuance of bonds to pay back or to finance their projects. The only differential in the both with the Housing Finance Corporation, they can only do housing only. The Public Facility, Public Facility Corporation can do any type of public facility corporation. I mean, public facility buildings. So that's the differential. And the Housing Finance Corporation can offer financing for housing with down payment assistance and home buyer programs. And with that, well, I also want to go and just bring this point up too. We, right now, we have the property at 440 Valley View. It's currently going through a reevaluation of their property because a new HFC has purchased that property. And so it's going before the Dallas County Board on December 3. And they'll reassess if that's approved and reassign the value of that property. And it will have to be replanted once it's reevaluated.
So Darren, I'm going to add a little to that real quick. So for members of the council, the chief appraiser for DCAD reached out to us today to let us know that 4040 Valley View, also as the Presidium Apartment Complex, has been purchased by a traveling HFC, the Pleasanton one. DCAD is holding the line and saying they will not approve the zero tax roll status. But they have, they're contesting it as property owners. In Dallas County, there were quite a few that were purchased. This is the one in Farmers Branch that is going through the process without support from the city. The new law doesn't go into effect until January 2027. So credit to the chief appraiser for holding the line and saying no. But the appraisal review board will meet in early December. It's expected to be held up in litigation for years. And any revenue that comes from that needs to be held separately in case the courts rule against us. This is happening across the state as we speak. We were notified today.
So?
That's a lot to take in, a new apartment complex.
That is a lot. So let me ask you, Ben, because you brought up a really good point. First of all, my question was going to be, could an HFC that's located in another city, say El Paso, try to do a development here in Farmers Branch?
That's exactly what they're trying to do. So it's more of a tax status of what they're trying to do? But yes. And they bought the brand-new apartment complex that just came through.
So what is the city's authority in that matter? Can the city say yes or no on that?
We'll probably need to get Nicole to help a little bit on this. But the new law will say that we need to support. But that's, again, 18 months out. So we're still waiting for that law to go into effect. Right now, it's kind of in limbo with the legislature giving direction. But the effective date's a little bit further out.
Yeah. So this is an issue with several cities in the state. There's actually ongoing litigation in Tarrant County right now. There are five current lawsuits that are all up on appeal. And they're awaiting briefing. We're actually watching those very closely. Essentially, in that scenario, there were traveling HFCs that came in that bought these apartment complexes, removed them from their roles without the knowledge of the city where they were. So those cities have sued, including, let's see, Mansfield has one. Fort Worth had several. There's about five or six different lawsuits. And so they all filed suit and asked for a temporary injunction. And I sat through a six-hour hearing back in May on this temporary injunction hearing. What the court ended up doing is actually granting the temporary injunction, not allowing them to move forward with withholding the tax status until it could be figured out by the courts. But it was only those that had not yet been approved by the appraisal districts and was still waiting to be, to be approved. So it sounds like, I have seen a letter from DCAD. They're going to do the same thing while this is all up in litigation. So we anticipate that the appraisal districts are not going to approve any of these traveling HFCs. The legislation, again, I mean, they did try to close the loophole, so to speak, this last go-round, and they have changed it. So now they are required to be within your geographic boundaries unless the other municipality that they're trying to purchase in approves it. So you would have to take action to allow it moving forward.
Okay. That's what I was trying to get to. So, okay. With that, Councilman Neal.
Yeah. This is an item that Councilwoman Bennett-Burton had brought forward. So I'd like to hear if she has any comments or?
I forgot about that. So sorry.
You're fine. You're fine. That was just a lot at the last minute. Okay. So just so I understand, the HFC is only for housing, but the PFC can be for any type of housing? Like apartments, duplexes, townhomes?
Correct. Any type of public facility.
Okay. So the HFC, the city sets the board for. A PFC, the developer sets the board for.
That's correct.
Okay. And so then the city has no say on what the developer does?
For which one?
On a PFC.
No, they have, they have guidelines I have to follow.
Okay. All right. That's what I want to make sure of. And although it states that, in this beautiful document we received from Nicole today, give me a moment, including, let's see, multifamily satisfies a series of requirements, including reserving 50% of the units for lower to moderate income housing, 10% to lower, 40% to moderate. And this is for 10 years?
Correct.
And then what happens in 10 years?
We'll leave that to legal answer that.
That requirement goes away.
And then what?
Then they are no longer restricted to low or moderate income requirements.
So then what are they?
Market value?
Get to do? Everything?
They're no longer restricted.
Okay. Okay. So they are also, as a PFC, they must affirmatively market to voucher holders. So even though we've been told that that was not the case, according to this legal document, it is?
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's really all I had. I wanted everybody to understand what is a possibility of being asked of us. And so I wanted this stated in public.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Neal?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. I guess I'm just trying to understand, are we considering here as a city adopting or approving PFCs or HFCs? I guess I'm trying to get that basic understanding here.
Yes. Because we have a project coming forward.
To consider. Okay. And I only phrase it that way because it wasn't long ago that the majority of this council gave direction that we should be getting out of the residential housing business, generally speaking. And so these types of things here at least seem and appear to me antithetical to that direction that we had given previously of, you know, acquiring and rehabbing older properties, that sort of thing, buying properties, assistance with down payments, those sorts of things. I'm not sure that this council, and I know that I'm not, in favor of additional programs. I know we have a couple of programs already in place. And at least for me, I think they're adequate for what we have now and available. So those are just a few comments and thoughts that I have.
Councilwoman Vierfranca?
Could you clarify for me? Does this allow for attainable housing? Is this part of a, part of a process for attainable housing in our city?
Correct.
Okay. I do think that it is important. And we have principals of schools, of paraprofessionals that cannot afford to live in the city that they work. And I think it would be a good opportunity to take a really good look at this and see how we can benefit, benefit our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Reed?
Thank you for the presentation. A lot of great information. Before committing or not committing to anything, you know, I'd want to see what the, what the project is, whether it's individual homes, apartment complexes, what have you. Because they're, they're going to be, there's different applications for, for the program. So to me, it seems like it's going to be on a case-by-case basis.
That's correct.
May I ask one more? I believe I had asked you guys to find out where it had been successful before, beyond the 10 years. Do you have that?
No, I don't have that.
We're still working on that research.
Please.
I have a lot of homework to do on this. So thank you for the presentation.
Councilman Reed?
Yeah. Going back to the, to the 10 years, Nicole, and I understand if you can't give a definitive answer, but it seems that after 10 years, if the restrictions are removed, then the owner of the property has the ability to bring rents up to market value?
Correct. They would no longer be under that stricter cap or requirement. Also, too, during that 10 years, like, they have to undergo pretty rigorous auditing every year to make sure that they're complying with that cap. But yeah, at the end of the 10 years, then there's no longer that requirement.
Thank you.
Councilman Neal?
Yeah. I just want to follow up. I'm not sure, did I hear correctly that there is, either is a project or multiple projects that want to utilize this? Because I'm not aware of such projects.
There is a project that's currently owned by a traveling housing finance corporation that is in the city, 4040 Valley View Lane, right next to Midway over there on the west side.
The one you referenced earlier?
Correct. So we're notified about that.
But beyond that?
There is something that if we get a project submission to us, this is a potential model that would be put before the council on behalf of a developer.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Yeah. So this basically restricts us for 10 years, correct?
Well, when you say restrict, the whole point of this is they actually get, it's taxes. There's no taxes.
There's no taxes for a 10-year period?
Correct. The city would have no taxes.
Okay. And?
No taxes from that property.
Okay. Okay. Know that right now, we are just having a discussion. There's no action to be taken on this just yet. But I would encourage you all to make a list of questions because you all will probably have more questions on this particular topic so we can vet this out further. The chart that you had included with your letter to us was really good. But I don't, because of the way it was marked, I can't really discuss it. I have questions about that. So I'm going to have to wait till we have another session to ask my questions. Does anybody else have anything else on this at this time? Okay. Thank you. Okay. 418. Who's presenting on C3?
Luke.
Okay. Okay. Folks, I'm going to try to get one more item in before we break for executive session, just so you know. So next up is Item C3, provide an update on initiatives addressing challenges with the unhoused population.
All right. Hello, Mayor and Council. Luke Parton, Emergency Management Coordinator for the City of Farmers Branch. Just going to be going over, just giving you a quick update on kind of what the city's doing with the unhoused within the city. All right. So jumping right in, just some of the concerns with the unhoused population within Farmers Branch. First off is just encampments. It's kind of a complex issue, especially when you look along the border with City of Dallas, with TechStop, and also with any kind of private property, like with DART and things like that. There's also the concern of debris and fecal matter or human waste in areas where there are higher populations of the unhoused. And then there's safety concerns, both for residents as well as for staff members. So kind of just making sure that we're addressing those kinds of concerns. All right. So some areas of concerns where we're kind of seeing hotspots for the unhoused. Along 635, this is mostly on TechStop property or within the City of Dallas. So there's not really much that we can do there. We are partnering with them, as we'll talk about here in just a little bit. These are primarily under the overpasses near Denton Drive, Josie Lane, Midway, Webb Chapel, and along the tollways. So within city parks, we will sometimes have individuals or groups of people that will be kind of setting up, setting up an encampment within a city park, whether that's in the Grove, Stork Park, Hoya, or Lippity Plaza. And then also underneath bridges, both city roadways as well as dark bridges. And then on private and abandoned property, all across the city, we're starting to see that. And so just making sure that we're addressing those concerns as well. So what are we doing to kind of deal with these issues or these concerns that we're having? So as y'all know, we are partnered with MetriQuest Services. We partner with them and have an agreement with them to provide resources and assistance to any unhoused individuals. So as those get reported to the city, we're reaching out to MetriQuest to be able to go out and make contact with those individuals, provide them resources, whatever they might need, offer them assistance. We also created, or we had a major hand in creating a couple of different multi-city groups that we're working with just to kind of create regional collaboration, work together, make sure that we're all doing kind of a coordinated approach to the unhoused. And just really working together to try and come up with some solutions. We also have contracted cleaning services, so they make sweeps through the city every two weeks. And they're going to be, they have a route that they kind of take, and they're going to hit some known hotspots. And just what they're doing is they're trying to pick up any debris, any trash, stuff like that, whether it's related unhoused or not. We can also call them out as needed, as they're available, of course. They are a very busy company. But we are able to call them out if we had an area with a lot of debris or something like that. And then city departments, we have many city departments that are working on this, community services, emergency management, parks, police department, public works. We're all working together, trying to do cohesive, coordinated approach to what we're doing. All right. So now I've talked about what we're doing, a little bit of background on what has happened up to this point. So back in 2023, in February, we initiated contact with the City of Dallas to start addressing some concerns from residents and just trying to figure out what's going on, what we can do to kind of solve these issues. That led to us forming a Quad Cities group. So that's Addison, Carrollton, Dallas, and Farmers Branch. And we were just working together to figure out what we can all do because we're all experiencing these issues. And so we're all working together. And then, from then until now, we've just been working together, just trying to figure out what's going on and also what we can do to solve it, or try and solve it, at least. And we also brought in MetriQuest Services, TechStop, DART, just trying to all work together, get all the stakeholders that are being impacted by this. And then we've just been working to develop SOPs, standard operating procedures, on how to address these things and explore different solutions to what's happening. And then through today, just continuing to collaborate, working with all the different agencies and stakeholders, just trying to address everything. All right. So where are we going? The future. Kind of paving the road for where we're going. We're just going to continue to expand and grow our regional collaboration efforts. So continuing to work together with those multi-city groups. Also, there's another one within Dallas County. It's kind of City Dallas plus surrounding cities. So it's not just the Quad Cities I mentioned just maybe ago. So it's more, including more cities within Dallas County. We're continuing to explore additional resources or solutions to try and figure out how we can solve these issues. can solve these issues. And then we're just gonna continue to enforce the rules of the City of Farmers Branch. As things are reported to us, we're gonna address them and do what we can to try and solve this. So with that, any questions?
Thank you very much. Luke, Councilwoman Viera Franca, this was your item?
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it. I have, is Karen Spicer here for Metrocrest? Karen, thank you so much for being here. Karen Spicer is responsible for homeless outreach through Metrocrest Services, and we really are, it is really important that we remain partners. I appreciate you working with all of our partners in the community. And Karen, thank you for being here. We really want to do everything that we can to tackle this from, from all ends. I do want to tell you that I had an opportunity to meet with Mayor Pro Tem Gay Willis of the City of Dallas, and we part, we sort of share a border. And we did a drive-through, and there was a huge encampment on Webb Chapel and 635 on the Dallas side. And I'm happy to report, there were 15 people in that encampment, and they have been removed, and I think that they have all received permanent housing as of October the 9th, which is the last time I looked into it. So it really, it really makes a difference for us to be out there constantly. I drive out there all the time to see what's going on. We do have a meeting pending that I've asked for with Tech Dot, and I'd like for Mayor Pro Tem Gay Willis and us to meet. And I would love for you to be at that meeting, and of course, Karen, if you would be there, that would be great, so that we can sort of try to combat it. I know that Under the Bridge is actually not the City of Farmers Branch, but that's the entrance to our city. Are we able to do anything out there to pick up debris and all of that? Can you kind of school us on that?
Yeah, so that kind of gets into that area where it gets a little complicated, because it is City of Dallas and it's Tech Dot property. And so we're trying to work with them, with both Tech Dot and City of Dallas, on what we can do to kind of keep that clean, pick up the debris, pick up the trash. Because yeah, this is the entrance to our city, we want it to look good.
Right.
So yeah, we're working with them. Sometimes it can be a little bit difficult, but we're doing what we can. I mean, we're all very busy, so we're doing what we can.
And then I know that we're relatively new members of Housing Forward. Can you tell me if we have begun to do any work with them? I went to one of their meetings, the mayor and I went to another meeting, but I guess they changed the location and we weren't able to attend. But are you able to tell me anything about Housing Forward?
I don't know much about that, because I'm newer into this role, and so I can get that information for you, but yeah.
Thank you so much, appreciate this update.
Councilman Neal.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation, it's a very helpful issue that we're facing here in the city. Can you tell me this multi-city group, about how many cities, what cities are involved? Just so the public can hear who else besides us is involved?
Yeah, so the Quad City Group, what we're calling it, is us, Carrollton, Addison, and the City of Dallas, and then also Metrocrest Services joins in on that. And then we also have the kind of greater Dallas area, and so I know Richardson, Garland, cities like that are in there. Can't exactly remember the exact list off the top of my head, but yeah.
Okay, great. And do we have any numbers regarding the costs that the city has already put forth, whether it's a relationship with Metrocrest, the cleaning service that we provide, the impacts that are police and fire? Do we have any sort of idea of overall costs that we've had to expend either annually or monthly, or do we have any data in that area?
I don't have that ready right now, but it's something that we could.
Okay, I'm just wondering, because as we go forward into this program, we might need to fund some of that if we decide to continue doing more and more of that. So do you know if there's any particular available grant money that will be available to assist in this effort, whether state, federal, or other?
Yeah, there's, I would imagine that there are some grants out there, and that would definitely be very beneficial.
Okay, and do we have, do we have somebody looking into those grants from the city? Do you know?
Yeah, we, we have our grant coordinator, and she'll be able to do some research on that.
So she's looking into some of this, as to how it might help with this overall program?
Yeah, it's definitely something we can look into.
Okay, then that's all I have for now. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilman Reed.
Thanks for the presentation. Personal, personal experience, I, where I work borders Dallas, and there's been a lot of solicitations from homeless there. And I want to thank our police department, because I think N-Tech's sick of hearing from me, but they always respond, they're right there. The great thing is they, they treat the people with respect, but, you know, get them to stop what they're, what they're doing at the same time. It's, like I said, it's right, literally on the border of Farmers Branch and Dallas. And I've seen Dallas starting to step up in regards to what they're doing in regard, concerning these situations. So there is progress being made, which is fantastic. But my main point was, you know, thank you to the, our police department, who are extremely responsive. And again, they, they treat the folks with, with, with respect, and that says a lot.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bennet.
Thank you, Luke. I would like to say the same. I mean, we really have seen, although we did earlier this year saw a peak, it is decreasing, and that is, we appreciate that, because we know that you guys are working really hard at that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
In the presentation, you listed four parks. Are we kind of checking out other parks around the city, just to double-checking that they're all taken care of as well?
Yeah, we're checking on everything. Those are just some specific examples I gave in there. But yeah, we're, we're watching everything, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Luke, have a question, please, and that is, for the benefit of everybody listening and watching, who or how should residents report homeless encampments to the city? Who should they call, or how should they best report if they see stuff that needs to be attended to?
Yeah, so they can call just the main line for City Hall and report them there, and then I'll get routed to ultimately me. And then I'll kind of coordinate that response with all the city departments. There is also a way to report it directly to Metrocrest, if you just see an individual that might need some assistance or some resources. And that's on their, on their website, where you can submit that form. But yeah, it'll get routed to me, and then I'll be able to coordinate with all the departments.
Okay, very good. Yes, sir.
Another great tool, and I tout this every chance I get, is FB TX Connect. There is a specific button on there for homeless and solicitation situations, gives you a number or another means to, to reach out. So if you have that app, great, use it. If you don't have it, I strongly suggest you get it. It's a great tool, not only for this scenario, but for other things throughout the city. And like I said, I, I use it quite frequently, and N-Tech, it gives you a rate to N-Tech, and then they route it to the appropriate, appropriate folks, appropriate folks. And N-Tech North, North Texas.
Emergency Communications. Emergency?
Emergency Communication Center. Thank you. So it's a great, great tool to have, great tool to use. So that's another opportunity.
Councilwoman Viera Franca.
I could not agree more. So I have the FB Texas Connect app on my phone. That's how I report, so you're able to actually take a picture, download it, and it just makes it easy. And I also have the Dallas 311 that I use quite often, and that is just the fastest, easiest way to download it and, and they get on it. You know, this can be a controversial thing to say, but, you know, I've spoken to people at Metrocrest and other agencies. I know that it's easy to think that we're helping by giving a dollar or a bottle of water, or, but every time that we help the unhoused in that situation is one more day that they're not seeking the help that they really, really need. So I encourage all of you to, to report this. Metrocrest is an incredible partner, and let's, let's keep working to, to take care of this. Thank you.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. Luke, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna read us into executive session. First item D1, city council will convene and close executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney to seek legal advice regarding matters related to Dallas area rapid transit, including but not limited to correspondence programs, funding agreements, and any associated legal rights, obligations, or potential actions. Item D2, city council will convene and close executive session pursuant to Section 551.087 of the Texas Government Code to discuss economic development incentives for Farmers Branch Project 2025.021. And item D3, city council will convene and close executive session pursuant to Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code pursuant, or excuse me, personnel to review, discuss, and evaluate the city's legal representation. If, we will recess to the city manager's conference room, and then we will be back out here at 5:30 for the reception. So, thank you.